We're recording.
Good evening. It is 6 o'clock and I'd like to call this meeting of the Wimmerburg School Committee to Order, and we will begin as we begin our meetings with the following statements. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal. Thank you. I'd like to begin with the chair's report this evening. And thank you all again that you have been so hard to prepare for the opening of school, both here at school and at home. And the beginning of school is an exciting, frantic time of year. So thanks to everybody, to everything they're doing to help. We are working on scheduling a joint meeting with the Finance Committee to learn about Chapter 7 of Funding and all of its peculiarities. So we are still working on the date. When we have that date, we will publish that sort of on the roadmap. At our workshop meeting, it was determined that for the next school committee meeting, we will meet in person. Our intent is to make it a outdoor meeting so that people at home can participate in the public comment and see in real time what's going on at the meeting. We thank everybody that was able to come this evening. We appreciate you being here. But we're working on making it so that people can participate from home as we participate here. So we'll know more about that on the next agenda that is posted. It will indicate if it is a completely in-person or an outdoor meeting. And that's what I have. Now it's time for public comment for anything that you wish to comment upon using our agenda items. But I did forget to say that according to the Copyright Amendment, policy advice is this meeting is being recorded and broadcast at a later date over Wimmerburg Public Assets Chair. The agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and those that are reasonably anticipated by the chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion, except for permission by the opening meeting law. Now as we head into public comment, our protocols list that for public comment, you are welcome to comment for three minutes. At the end of that three minutes time, we would ask you to allow someone else an opportunity to speak. Our general rules are 10 minutes of public comment. If that is not enough for this evening, we can add to that. So if you do have a public comment, we would ask you to go to the microphone on the floor here, and you need to state your name and address. Also, public comment is exactly that. It's not conversation. It's comment. We will listen to your ideas and pay attention to what your comments are. All right, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening. The committee's live right, and personally, thank you to both any school leadership or administration. I can't imagine what it's been like the last couple of years. My comment tonight is my thoughts on the ideas to prevent any type of segregation or discrimination that may occur. As I do things, often I'm saying the vaccinated may, the unvaccinated may not. These people may match, these may not. And I just want to make sure I really make rules for the school to remember that the students who are here are minors, and whether or not they've been vaccinated, whether or not they've been out of state. Those aren't their choices. Those are the choices that their family has made for them. So when they come in here, they're not violating, you know, people's ideas or rules if they are living the lives of a minor. And so I just worry when I read rules that create a differentiation between healthcare choices. We are really setting ourselves up to segregate into discriminating. And I worked for a long time in healthcare, very, very involved with HIPAA. Even as a high school student, I worked as a pharmacy technician at the Walmart owner. I knew what my parents were taking, never full soul. And so I keep healthcare privacy so personally serious. A family member was in a huge D accident, a family friend, I didn't tell my parents about it because they remember about it. They found out about it later. So I take healthcare privacy so serious. We wouldn't label a child with HIV. We wouldn't socially distance a child from a household that frequently has virus. We wouldn't talk about a teenager that didn't get an HPV vaccine because we think that they're more likely to spread herpes, which can be the generic cancer. So there's a lot of serious things in healthcare that we don't label people, we don't segregate them, we don't call them out, we don't even really make children aware. And so my huge concern for we become so confident calling people out as proven negative or positive, vaccinated or unvaccinated, that I feel there are two work circumstances where people are getting anything that I think unvaccinated or unvaccinated. And I just want to make sure that children are seen as minors, they're treated with equality and tolerance because they come here to be equal. And I just know it's easy fears to start looking for ways to manage everything, but everything should roll out in a way that the child feels equal and tolerant. Regardless of their healthcare circumstances. So just want to share that I was worried about that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm kind of going in a little bit longer with more long masks. Everybody, I'm living in a mother and then most importantly, mother of two children who committed to Wimmerburg schools. I'm here today to discuss the issue of masking our children as we head into new study. Today, I am hopeful that the school board, the superintendent, and the school community can work together in a respectful, educated, and purposeful way so that we move forward to make the best decisions for our students. Before I start, I want to ask if you make here work for the CDC? Okay. All right. Oh, I guess I can go on. As known, there is a strong division between what is right and what is wrong regarding COVID. A lot of this seems to depend on personal politics, news network, and larger, which doctor you choose to listen to. Last year, when information from the library sources were collecting months daily and the guidance and treatment of the future seemed kind of unknown, the school district did the best that they could with the information provided at the time. Although these unprecedented times, we have learned a lot from the last year and do most best and most save our children and our goals. So let's talk about what we've learned. The school district is understandably looking for advice from the CDC and DESI in order to make these decisions. And with that said, I will give the most current information straight from the CDC. Here is what the CDC has reported about COVID for ages 0 to 17 years in the United States. There's been 3,730,657 total cases. There's been 457 deaths of those children. This goes without saying that, you know, any child death is unacceptable, but that is a 0.12%. In addition to that, masks that provide information specific to COVID in this state is showing that no one under the age of 3 has died from COVID, that from COVID in Massachusetts. I urge everybody here to look up the Massachusetts government website and verify that information. The CDC reports that people any age with certain underlying medical conditions are at an increased risk for severe COVID illnesses. Refer to CDC for those specific guidance. What we should take away from this is that people that are otherwise healthy are not closely affected by COVID. Should they become ill, it's nearly impossible, as last week told me. Regardless of the news source, it seems that all major news networks, CNN, MSNBC, Fox, ABC, NBC, agree that the majority of people do not even know that they got COVID and are just spreading it. And to believe that by getting the vaccine or protected from severe COVID symptoms, a child not wearing a mask should not be a concern to you. Children should not be mandated to wear a mask. Has anyone considered what these mandates are doing to our children? The mental health of our children is of great concern. I believe that we all agree that the most concerning matter is increased suicide evasions to times of completion for children under 18 years, and it has significantly increased. According to the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention in Massachusetts, in 2020, the second leading cause of death was from ages 10 to 34 were suicides. According to the CDC, the top three leading cause of deaths in Massachusetts is cancer, heart disease, and cancers. COVID is not even listed at the top 10 for cause of deaths in Massachusetts. But we are happy to live with all these mandates. I include all these stats in case anybody wants to see my hat, but they're spread through these organizations and the government. Specific to our community, since COVID has surfaced, there have been no children in Wimmerburg this past week in COVID. I repeat that zero children have died from COVID. The choice to mask your children in our schools that the school board is currently considering has and will continue to make children fearful of breathing fresh air. It is making them fearful of being on their family, their friends, and teachers. These unrealistic fears based on information that I've already provided to you. Our children are likely to die from a car accident on their way to school, or die in the pool in the backyard, or unnatural illness like cancer. I recently watched a parent from another school district make a great analogy that I'd like to share with you. If I sent my child to school with a football helmet on his head every day in fear that a rocket fall from the sky could kill my child, you would be calling DCF on me stating that I'm accusing my child. You're forcing masks on my children for an illness that will not and has not killed them. Putting a vacuum filled mask on my child all day to prevent atmospheric oxygen is far more dangerous. On Monday night's meeting, Superintendent Burnham stated that their goal is to move to a model where the vaccinated staff and children could be allowed to go unmasked. Obviously, by separating the masked from the unmasked, students that are clean staff will then be segregated by their vaccinated staff. We cannot have our school discriminate or treat differently those by their vaccinated staffs. This is clearly problematic.
This is dominance. This is dominance.
I literally have this.
That's not.
That's a fair.
Okay.
Is a person so fearful, a person is so fearful of COVID that they can take all the caution they need to make themselves feel safe to have. I'm here tonight praying that there are parents and staff that feel the way I do and are willing to speak up and stop or something. If you believe in science and data, COVID is highly likely to result in death or serious illness for our children. I'm pleading with the school board to make a decision and allow the parents to decide if their child should wear a mask or not. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello. I'm going to kind of piggyback on what the other woman has said. Hello, good evening. My name is Amy Stanley. I'm a Wimmerburg resident on Southern Hill. I have two children in the school system, one going into third grade and the other in preschool. I'm also a registered nurse and I've worked throughout the American. I'm here to speak on behalf of my sons. My specific concern is requiring children to wear masks in school. Some of the other recommendations outlined in Superintendent Burnham's draft for reopening the school includes mask-wearing signage, lest they forget their faces and not be seen, continued distancing, and no sharing. Most have spent this summer unmasked in the store at a neighbor's home at the Flagonard Royal Beach. Kids have given them a camp on school property unmasked. Masks have become highly controversial talismans. I say talisman because evidence that they work on preventing the spread of coronavirus is conflicted and shoddy at best. The latest trend in social shaming is to follow the science and science trail. I agree, but scientists, doctors, nurses, and Novavax warriors that have spoken against mainstream measures have been censored or ridiculed and no longer believe they are being presented with Novavax information. Politicians have been reported not wearing masks when they believe they aren't being filled. This is theater. The American Academy of Pediatrics website reports COVID deaths for children they're counting for, I got even a little less, 0.673%. The CDC has also reported that, and I quote, "Most children with COVID-19 can have mild symptoms or not at all." In 2009, more children died from the flu during the season. Unmasking, social distancing has never instituted or presented as far as I know. The answer to that to all the people that have been affected by COVID deaths or injuries, while us truly don't know what the common facts are of COVID, we also do not know the common facts of the measures being instituted and mandated for communication. I think we have lost sight of contact with the local authorities. One side gets all the way off of view. I believe that the measures outlined in the document for reopening, regarding our response to the current endemic, will cause more harm to good and is largely political in nature. My concerns will be retention of CO2, which affects every cell in the body. The number of bacteria obtained on masks potentially causing harm. And I share my take of potential effects short and long term for our children socially, psychologically, and literally have taught that they in every one are vectors of disease. That if they show their face, they are deemed they are in selfless life. That virus needs us to breathe. And a quick example of, you know, for mental health crisis is an increase of 31% despite it as a social learning model over the past 18 months. That sharing is bad. Heavenly, holding hands is forbidden. Children are also learning facial recognition, social and emotional cues that require seeing faces. Both my children are learning how to read and have speech issues, and I believe that they should be seeing faces. I have been touched upon by the negative effects social distancing, mask wearing, and neurotic use could have on the immune system that's developing. Many of these measures have been fear-driven, knee-jerk reactions being further compelled by institutions with nefarious histories and no conflicts of interest. Our children are at the price and have been entered into a political and financial game. That said, it's not up to me to choose what parent decides is the best medication, vaccine, or intervention for their child. I'm aware some parents want their children in masks. This brings along my final point, freedom to choose. Every child has a right to a proper education, and everybody has a right to choose. I believe every parent should choose if their child should be masked. I must sign a permission slip for the school choose hand sanitizer on my four-year-old. Makes no sense to me that mask-wearing can be instituted without prior consent or even liability for potentially harmful effects. It is my right to choose the best care for my child. It is not the decision of the government, the school system, or my neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Amy, I'm 23th Christian Lane. I'm a mom here in Lick, but I'm also a nurse at Wimmerburg School. The 2020-2021 school year is extremely challenging for students. Therefore, it is very sad. The Wimmerburg public school nurses are grateful for cooperation of the school community. Some students with medical concerns chose to walk away from the last year. We would like to be able to follow all of our students back to school. We would like to keep our buildings safe and open for all students. Many of our students are not eligible to receive the COVID-19 vaccine. For them, for students with medical concerns, their family members at home with medical concerns, and to help us ensure as safe a learning environment as possible, we ask that the school committee follow the recommendations of Centers for Disease Control, the American Academy of Pediatrics, and approve masks if you are all students in the staff at the beginning of 2021-2022 school year. Thank you.
Thank you. Our agenda is up, but we are happy to entertain a motion to continue if there's anyone else who would like to speak.
I'm here.
I'm here. Motion, so is that the public comment on the sentence?
I'll second that motion.
All right, I'll go. All right, go ahead.
I'm here as a mom, Rainrod High Street, child's in college, but given a chance to do more research now that I've got time. As a young parent, I was so busy all the time, I couldn't deal with politics for that. Anyway, I'm here as a holistic practitioner to defend natural immunity. It's just not talked about. Not defended, it's not recognized. But if you have a child functioning from virus, that virus is nothing. That virus is forever changed when it encounters a virus. And a child pretty much before they become adolescents. It's a key to time. They're good. If they have troubles, there are remedies. Of course, they're blocked because the FDA prefers the vaccine. I don't know why. It's one road. That's it. One way for everybody. It's frightening. Not tested, not tested on everyone. Testing on us. So, you know, trust, trust people to be able to make decisions. They have doctors. The same practices as practitioners to help these people make decisions. You're off the book. Don't be honest. Deal with whatever you need to do. We're not making the medical choices for you. Our 45th president made regeneron. Free to anybody who wants it. If you're safe with COVID, it's, you're not. It's a very expensive medication. He made a point to pay for it, and it's there if you need it. No need to die or get vaccinated. You're good. Our kids are good. Take these off. They're not healthy. They're discriminatory, and they're nonsensical. So all I wanted to say was, get yourselves off the hook. You don't have to defend the CDC. You don't have to get on the side of conventional medicine. Let the national convention deal. We have remedies controls. You're free. Just be done. If 19 months of COVID epidemic gets over, if everything wasn't prepared. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm here for the closing. I apologize. I don't understand. I was not aware that there was a policy change or there wasn't. I have a different point of view than the previous speakers tonight, ironically, since I'm not wearing a mask. But some of the things I want to talk about tonight. Number one, the CDC says, and I'm trusting the CDC more than I'm trusted by doctors, I want to. If you're not wearing a mask, you have a greater chance of transmission of a virus if you are infected. The CDC also says that if you are infected, regardless of the depth of that infection, you probably are carrying a heavy viral load, particularly if it's the Delta variant, which is another word that I have heard in previous discussions, which is much more infectious than the virus I've been dealing with just a couple of months ago when we were in school. That is proven as real science. The other thing I want to talk about tonight yet is that all of our children have families. My children live in part-time. My elderly parents also live in part-time. One of them is immunocomorbid. So if your child comes into school and gives the virus to my child, because your child is not wearing a mask, but my child is, the science says that that is very possible. And he comes home and gives the virus to my elderly father, who is immunocomorbid, albeit vaccinated, but the vaccines are clearly on 100%. So while your child and my child are very unlikely to die, as these statistics that were presented, unfortunately, my parents are not in the same category, statistical category. I actually am favor of segregation. And I know that sounds like a crazy thing to say in today's day and age. But we are making choices for our children, and those choices have consequences. We're in a bad situation. We're in a terrible situation. Nobody wants to be in the situation that we're in. Yet here we are, and we have to make the best of it. And the best of it right now, as I understand it, for the good of everybody, is to follow the recommendations of the CDC. And by the way, I doubt very much that our stake yard has had its last word, and the conversation that we may be having today may be a moot point a week or two. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Thank you very much. We very much appreciate every explanation. Next on the agenda is the review approval of minutes. We have radio session minutes from the 28th April, the 19th May, the 16th June, and the 28th June. In reading those minutes, did anyone else may have anything to change? All right, then I will take a motion to approve those radio session minutes.
I'll take a motion to approve the radio session minutes from 4/28/21, 5/19/21, 6/16/21, and 6/28/21.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. On favor?
Aye.
opposed? All right then. And then we have some executive session minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to table the radio session minutes.
I'll second that motion.
On favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay. Next, we have the review approval of line item transfer.
Anybody, Mr. Cassidy, to take that as well?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Cassidy. This is Mary. In front of the school committee this evening, we have two line item transfers, both at Turkey Hill Elementary School. The first transfer is a transfer in reference from a rural line item. There was some circulance in the transfer to buy an extra chapter from the classroom. The second is the replacement scrubber, floor scrubber at Turkey Hill Elementary. And that money is coming from electricity, and we feel a weekly, and I want to carve that at the end of the year. So the first transfer is transferring $766. The second transfer is transferring $7,000. Because it's the local community, if you are, if you're independently or just.
Does anyone have any questions about line item transfers? I think we can take them together. Somebody make a motion if you don't need.
I'll make a motion to approve the two line item transfers, one for $7,000 and one for $766 as presented.
I'll second that.
On favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, thank you very much, Cassidy. And Superintendent Jacoby, you know, record you this evening. I'm going to say that you're on track. The building is ready for reopening this evening, teachers and students, in the last two weeks. Thank you. And the new business, Superintendent's reopening recommendation.
Good evening, everyone. I outlined my recommendation in the letter that was sent along with the flowers. I just want to recap some of the elements that were in the letter. Since last June, when the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education indicated that all health and safety guidance, including masking, would be lifted for this fall, and their indication that they would continue to collaborate with the Mass Department of Public Health to issue additional recommendations as necessary, again, that was June 19. By July 9, the CDC had released updated guidance for K-12 schools, which recommended masking of individuals who are not fully vaccinated, and those individuals included teachers, staff, and students, age 2 and older when indoors. By July 19, the American Academy of Pediatrics recommended all students older than age 2 and all school staff mask in school regardless of vaccination status. Then July 27, the CDC released updated mask guidance, which indicated universal indoor masking for all staff and students in schools regardless of vaccination status, a change to their earlier guidance. July 30, the Mass Department of Public Health updated a mask advisory recommending that fully vaccinated individuals wear masks when indoors, other than at home, if specific risk factors were present. July 30, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education with the Mass Department of Public Health updated COVID-19 guidance for fall 2021, strongly recommending masks for all K-6 students when indoors, masks not being necessary outdoors. recommending masks for all K-6 students when indoors, masks not being necessary outdoors, unvaccinated staff in all grades, unvaccinated students in grade seven and above, unvaccinated visitors would be required to mask indoors, individuals at higher risk for severe disease from COVID-19 or with a household member who is at the Congress, encouraged to mask regardless of vaccination status. Schools, they've determined could allow vaccinated students to remain unmasked, however, require that all staff and students should wear masks on school buses and in school health offices. As you can see, throughout the summer months, the guidance has been changing quite frequently and will likely continue to change. The current guidance from the Department of Education is not consistent with the CDC and the American Academy of Pediatrics guidance for K-12 schools. Given the conflicting, changing guidance, along with my leadership team, we review and give consideration to all of the guidance released that I just referenced, a recommendation from our agent to the Shoba Association of Boards of Health, a recommendation from the school's physician, consultation around concerns with various superintendents, as well as any concerns from my leadership team. Given that the health and safety of our staff and students remains my top priority, our objective here is to keep all of the staff and students healthy and in school for teaching and learning. As you know, remote learning is not an option this year. Therefore, I make two recommendations. The first, that we begin this year with universal masking, as was the strong urging of our local Board of Health. All staff and students will wear masks indoors regardless of vaccination status. In part, this is because of the highly transmissible nature of the current Delta variant. We also have public health metrics trending in the wrong direction at this time, particularly here in Lunimer. The vaccination rate of students grades seven to twelve was approximately sixty percent. Vaccinated individuals can spread the virus, this Delta virus, as easily as non-vaccinated individuals. Students under age twelve have not yet had the opportunity to be vaccinated, which would provide them an added layer of protection from the virus. And schools are public buildings. We are part of the municipality. In this particular circumstance, we have a responsibility to the greater community. This is a public health matter. My second recommendation, that the Lunimer public schools participate in the state to you test and stay growing. In this model, this would allow us to keep asymptomatic, close contacts in school, wrapping that and quarantining that at home, by testing anyone identified as a close contact with a rapid test for five days. This testing would be conducted each morning at a singular location. Our plan would be to have this testing occur in the grabber lot of my TCT. It would be a drive-out model. Parents would drive into the lot, park in the location. The nurse would go to the vehicle, administer the test to the student. The parent would have to wait in the car for approximately ten, maybe as many as fifteen minutes for the results to be reported back to them. If there is a negative test result, the student is cleared to be, uh, dropped out of school. If there is a positive result, the individual would be sent home to isolate until cleared to return to school and directed to follow up with the physician. Relative to the transportation guidance, the guidance was revised by the Department of Education in February, so it's the same guidance that I brought to you as we were making a decision about a full return in early April last year. Regarding masks on bus, everyone on the bus and waiting at a bus stop must wear a mask that covers the nose and mouth at all times. Masks should be provided by the student or family. The districts may ensure that sufficient extra disposable masks are made available on all buses for any student to remain on. Physical distancing. Districts may adopt the updated standards only when the required mitigation measures, wearing masks and keeping bus doors open, are followed. At the preschool through elementary, so for us, our pre-K through five, capacity limitations and physical distancing requirements for students on buses has lifted back in February. For the middle and high school level, capacity limitations and physical distancing requirements for students on buses were also lifted, except for middle and high school students in districts with high community prevalence. Then the capacity limitation and physical distancing requirements on buses need to be amended to allow two students per seat on the bus. We could fluctuate in and out of that state constantly. It would be a significant challenge, on very short notice, to notify families that their judge would not be eligible to take the bus to school tomorrow, and until the next time. Therefore, we want to proceed with limiting capacity on the secondary bus run for grades six through twelve to two students per seat on the bus. That makes for things to be very, very consistent and viable, uh, in terms of transportation for our students and our families. I did hold Zoom forums on Monday afternoon with the staff and Monday evening with families. There were many questions around vaccination mandates, how lunches would work, uh, many questions. We're going to put them all together with the responses, and we're going to push that information out to families, as well as post it on our website. You also have seen, as our parents, a draft of the reopen plan for this year. As part of the SR three grant, we're required to take a look at and review that plan every three months. We will be reviewing that plan every three months. We have a COVID dashboard that we report our cases in school, as well as the cases in the community, as a frame of reference. We will continue to post that data, and I can tell you that I will be in, uh, constant communication with our health and safety officer, Mrs. Kim Lowry, who spoke earlier this evening. And as we did last year, we have regular weekly meetings with our agent from the Board of Health. Those are the experts. They have the greater context for the data. They understand the circumstances that are leading to new cases. I rely on their guidance when we're making decisions. This isn't Dr. Burner just making a plan that I can follow. We are committed to that level of oversight and adjustment as appropriate in conjunction with the recommendation from the Board of Health. We will be watching this weekly. If we get to a place where I feel that conditions warrant and the Board of Health is in support, I'd be bringing a recommendation before you to make an adjustment to any operating policy that we have to open the area. I could be coming back to you in six weeks. Things might be very different, or things might be worse. I don't know. But as I have done all of last year, we will heavily rely on the expertise of our local Board of Health to make decisions that are right for us in Lunimer. That is my commitment to you. That is my commitment to my staff. That is my commitment to my students and their families. The safety of our children is paramount. Statistics indicate that children don't die of COVID, but they can become seriously ill in a way that lingers. I don't want, if you can help, I don't want to put our children in that position. I think that we owe it to them to do what we think is right, to keep them as safe as we possibly can. And nothing we can do here will give a hundred percent air to that, but I think that we need to do our very best to keep them safe. Identifying questions, some members of my admin team right there as well? Does anyone have any questions on our committee, Dr. Burner?
I think, Dr. Burner, that you have put out your reopening plan in a certain suite. I think that, um, any questions that the board had, we probably have already asked you, as anyone else has. So thank you very much for your time and explanation.
We will continue to keep parents updated as well. And I can provide an update for you as to what we know are conditions that may want to change to report, uh, perhaps we will, uh, throughout the last many months, if you should be, I can give you an update.
Yeah, we would appreciate it. We would appreciate that. Um, so I think before we go on to the superintendents' recommendation, I'd like to give each of the members of the committee an opportunity to voice their opinion, and then we will take the vote. So, um, I don't know.
Okay, I think this is a tough situation that we're all in. Um, no one is doubting that. I know as a parent, I certainly have struggled with the daily thoughts of the effects this is having on my children, uh, whether it is the masks, the social distancing. There's been very valid concerns about the long-lasting effects on the kids, especially the younger ones. Um, now, we have families in our districts who have chosen to get vaccinated, and there's frustrations from them about not wearing masks. There are families in our district who have chosen not to get vaccinated, and they decided that is not the best choice for their family. We are not here to judge those decisions, but we're here to make a decision on what's going to keep every child in our district safe. And the reality is, there are children in our community that are very immunocompromised. And we have to remember that those children, most of our children in the district could get COVID and be completely fine, but those particular groups of kids could get COVID and will not be fine. And that's where the decision is that we have to struggle. Um, I will say, we've had parents come to us with concerns on both wearing masks and not wearing masks, and I want to say that we do hear you. We, this may look like a decision we're making just sitting on the stage. We have put hours into thinking about this and listening to parent concerns, and everyone's concerns are valid, but as a committee, we're here to make the best decision for the school district and to keep every child safe in our district.
Hi, this is Sophie Shapiro. First of all, I want to thank you, Dr. Burner, for presenting such a comprehensive, complete plan for us that definitely makes making this decision a lot easier, and we really appreciate your hard work. I would also like to say that, kind of to echo Laura's point, I think this has become an extremely divisive political, personal issue, and I think that's really disheartening when really, I think the focus up here should be making our decision based on the science that has been presented to us, or presented to Dr. Burner, and then presented to us, and just keeping the health of the students at the forefront of our minds and keeping all the excess out of it. Um, I would also like to note that I know a big, um, issue that we were talking about in the spring was, um, bringing the civics curriculum into the high school and, um, stressing the importance to our students, um, that they have on their communities and as being just a productive, helpful citizen to their community. And I think encouraging wearing masks and mandating it would also kind of help tie in that a little bit and make students, even as young as our kindergartners, realize that they are a part of this community and they have a commitment to public health as well, and kind of stress to them that they are a citizen of this community just as much as anybody else. Um, I would also just like to stress again that roughly half of our student population is under the age of twelve and cannot get vaccinated, so they're just as at risk as they were at the very start of this pandemic, and nothing has changed for them. And lastly, I would also like to say that, um, I know the lack of being able to see faces has been a really stressed issue for especially the younger kids, but there are clear masks and face shields and such that have been warranted that they work just as effectively as a opaque one, and that could definitely help to help see faces and such so that we're not scared of faces, but we are calm as in a public health. Thank you.
I don't know if I'm in a minority or majority or not, doesn't really matter, but I think I think that we should focus on and pay a little more attention to is the effect that these masks are having on our kids. It's not, it's not harmless. You know, I see kids that play video games all day long that don't play outside. Um, you know, I was, I was out in front of houses, learning boards, I'm like, so everybody I just get down and said, said, we've got a hard time recruiting because, you know, the kids are coming out of school, they're just, they're just out of shape. I think when we're not looking at each other's faces and we're not making eye contact, and the kids are losing something at school as well, I don't think it's harmless. I don't think it's as easy as saying, wear masks or wear something to protect somebody else, I think we're doing a lot of these things, I really do. And I think the, uh, the mental health aspect of it and, um, the mental health, the child mental health, I know in a couple of different hospitals, we just go before and had triple wazoo, you know, fifty-five pad, and overrun, and a lot of it's coming from hysteria or overreacting. So I think everybody's hard to the best of ways. I don't, I think everybody wants to do the right thing. But I think it takes a little courage too to, to accept the risk, you know? And it's like, as race, I mean, I don't know, when I was a kid, I remember watching that show about the, the boy in the bubble that, that couldn't be around anybody else. And I thought, what we're doing is we're putting everybody in a bubble. Except there's maybe in that one case or the, the few cases that we have, we have to get to that, that we're going to do everything, we're taking their childhood away from you. At least a piece of childhood that I think is unnecessary. So that's what, that's what I think.
Thank you. Mr. Lightman?
Thank you. Uh, I'd like to thank the superintendent for her in-depth presentation, also the collaboration with working with the team, your leadership team, the unions, uh, having the parent Zoom as well, uh, forum. I think there's, uh, there's a lot of strong opinions on this, uh, and we've seen that in tonight too. Uh, and there are elderly parents who, who did all the work here, and we see all sides of the spectrum. Tonight, I think we've been seeing two nurses on total opposite sides. Uh, but I think it's important that we respect all views and that we're listening to everyone's views, and we appreciate your opinions. I see it as a public health issue, and cases are rising, uh, and data is trending in the wrong direction. Uh, we've seen children are susceptible, and then recently we've got seen breakthroughs And I think one of the biggest things is that it's been constantly changing, and I think that's been a hard thing for, for students, for our, our teachers, uh, and parents especially with the constant change. We saw the numbers going down in June, and it looked like the sun was going to be greater, and then this fourth really started going, we're still ascending. We saw tonight where people didn't know whether we had a mask mandated on our schools. It's just a constant change, and it can be very confusing and frustrating. I think also the Delta variant being more infectious is also, again, increasing that bad situation. I did want to mention that we haven't talked too much about it tonight, but Mr. Kelly over with the mental health issue. And I think it's so important that we make sure we focus on that as well, whether it's the SFRAM, increasing our staffing to help all of the mental health issues, and having our teachers to take the kids outside of the fresh air and mask quicks as much as possible, even having class outside. But I see it as that we're using that collaboration, we're trusting the experts, and we're using that local Board of Health and our support for this mask movement.
Thank you. My own opinion, I feel that as a school committee, we are charged with the education of the children to the highest achievement that we can provide them. If they are not here, it is hard. If they are alone with remote learning because we had a outbreak, something else is going on, then their education outside of everything else, their education is in danger. And as being tasked with the care of the education of the children, once I look at the local Board of Health saying that they should be masked, privately, our state is in a substantial rate of transmission that may change, that may get better, that may get worse. And the CDC and the local Board of Health are saying that children should be masked under those, and the adults in school, under those circumstances. So, it is my opinion that our responsibility is to the education of the children. We can't educate them if we have to shut down because people have got sick. We can't educate each other. That's it. The mental health issues are there, and the SFRAM planned dispersion is heavily weighted in that area. We have not ignored mental health issues. So, it is my opinion that we need to accept superintendent's recommendation. Now, moving forward, we can make a motion, and we can decide this evening on what to do. I don't know if any of it gives additional time would be of any help. I don't know that would make a difference, but I'm willing to entertain a motion to our superintendent's recommendation.
I just like that. One thing about the mental health in mind is that kids can't get a therapist right now. There's a long waiting list. There's nobody available. It's not so easy. So, as much as there's funds there, there aren't therapists that are even taking care of patients.
I understand that point. I agree with you on that. I was referring to the funds in school, the increased mental health personnel who are on the issue.
And just as a point of information, we made the recommendation to hire social workers or adjustment counselors because they have that clinical training and they're licensed clinicians. So, yes, it's challenging for kiddos to get appointments outside of school, but we have counselors, therapists on staff now additionally. As you know, for the last few years, we've had the referral service interface. We did find some challenges with interface, being overloaded once the pandemic came in. But we have also now brought on board CareSauce. CareSauce, that program utilizes therapists from all over the country. They can do tele-visits. Our students and their families have access to CareSauce. Our staff and their families have access to CareSauce. We will still have interface this year as well. And Lunenburg residents, you don't have to have a student in the schools. Lunenburg residents also have access to the interface service. So, I just want to reaffirm for everyone that the focus around mental health for our students, in staff, and honestly, members of the community has been a priority for this administration for the entire time that I've been in the district. And it is a major focus moving forward next year and beyond with those SFRM funds. Because we know how important that clinical support is. Mr. Lightman?
Yeah, I just want to add, as the superintendent mentioned, the test and stay model. I find that that's going to be important too, except for kids, again, are in the building. Because the data shows that there's not a spread when everyone's in masks. So, the students, even if they are positive, they're not spreading it. They're in schools. They're still learning. And if we're not in masks, then we're spreading it more. It could be staffing issues that we've seen last year where we may not even be able to be open. And again, that's a detriment to students who are not going to be able to be open. So, when I see that, I think, oh, let's have that with a mask, and we can actually be open for our students.
Correct, because this year remotely, if we run into staffing challenges and they don't have staff to be in the building, last year we had the option of teaching everyone remotely for the day. The state is not allowing that option this year. So, if we were in that situation, I would like we have a policy school. And then that then we have to meet our own. Any other comments? Then someone would make a motion.
I'll make a motion to honor the superintendent's recommendations in total.
I'll second that motion.
Please be held with a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendations in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you very much, Dr. Burnham, for your thoughtful recommendations. And thank you to the committee for working on, thinking about delivering in a care community. And the community, thank you for your comments as well. Next, we have the middle school athletic waiver. Then finally, Savannah, you have to be speaking.
Just make sure your microphone's on.
Tess? Hello?
Hello.
Good evening. It's finally great to see everybody first. I'm here to clarify, and because we have a new, like a structure of athletics under one school and one principal. So, excuse me, previously, with the Lunenburg High School and the principal, municipal principal, and actual principal, each year, we needed middle school students, whether it was seventh grade or eighth grade, or just the creators to participate on the JV level sometimes and varsity level to fill out rosters to be able to have teams compete. We would need to fill out a waiver process to the environment in order to have, allow those students to participate. This year, with Mr. Santini being responsible now of the middle and high school, that waiver process isn't needed because those students are eligible under that rule. Again, really, we need seventh grade students, in some cases, seventh grade students, mostly eighth grade students, to be able to fill out our rosters. There are some sports where we're sure enough where we don't need that, but other sports, we are kind of on the cusp where, yes, we could maybe get away with not having those middle school students, but when injury happens or other things, because we haven't had enough students, we've had to fall back to reducing means to less numbers on field or less competitors. And it's not the best situation. This just allows us to allow them without having to go through that waiver process. Again, those middle school students are, when they're needed, that's where we're going to use it for those lower levels in some cases where we just have the varsity level of those students compete on that sport. But not really from the past is changing besides we don't have the paperwork to fill out.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Banera? So, just to recap then, the only thing changing from what is typically happening with the athletics is that you don't have a
Since me being athletic director, I've worked hard to get a middle school program started here at Lunenburg with what the middle school students and the parents. Someone can make the charge that allows sixth graders to participate on that high school level, but that's not, that's not what this is designed for. Since me being athletic director, I've worked hard to get a middle school program started here at Lunenburg with what the middle school students, the parents, and community want. I might want those to go away. In a sense, someone can look at where we have middle school field hockey. And in the past, the field hockey numbers at high school level have hindered on, yes, they've had enough, but then with injuries and whatnot throughout the season, they've had player reduced number of people off the field for a deal and things like that. Where if, it probably won't have an issue because we have a very good number of people that have signed out, which is wonderful. But if someone at that JV level or varsity level were hurt, we could in turn take somebody from JV, bring them up to varsity, take someone from that middle school team and put them on the JV level where no program would have to play away from reduced numbers or anything like that. It would just, it's like one big team. Oh, not team, but one big program where you can move those athletes. It's a positive. I can tell you that, I know talking earlier real quick, but I bumped into you guys, some of you anyways, that the registration level for fall athletics, some of them are the biggest that I've seen since I've been here in some sports, which is awesome. Especially with everything that we've gone through last year and have to deal with this year, that the kids use athletics as their home. And they get to do something that they love and interact with. And especially being outside, you know, wearing the hopefully safest, so awesome, you know, where they get to play the sport they enjoy. And I know earlier you guys were talking about mental health. For me, I think it was a better thing when I was younger than to be out, play something that I love. My mental health was great when I was doing that. And, you know, I know just even last year, seeing the kids out there, playing, and then seeing them in school, you saw a little workout in this stuff. You know, and the fact that we were able to offer that and not face any, you know, problem or anything. I was at a conference this summer, and when I spoke to other athletic directors across New England, they were all like going, "Wait, do you even have to stop athletics once?" I said, "No." I said, "Good." I said, "My coaches, the kids, the parents," I said, "they all worked very hard because they solved a problem." And I'm very proud of that. I'm proud that I just could consider, yeah, we need each other. We, they play everything. There were schools that they played against that, that they need each other in one sport, but our school didn't. And that, you know, that's something you have five times. I digress, but, but yeah, that's pretty much the middle school waiver.
Okay, thank you very much. Does anyone have second questions? Then I would entertain a motion to accept Mr. Banera's plan for athletics. And I assume that once the teams figure it out all, come back as usual, and how many students participate in the
You're absolutely.
All right. So, is there a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve the athletic waiver presentation as the program is presented.
I'll second that motion.
All right, then all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys, as always.
Thank you, Savannah. You good?
Thank you.
This extended day program, our numbers have gone up drastically in the last week as, you know, kids are getting ready to come back to school and parents are thinking, "Oh, no, I don't have anything." You know, due to, due to everything that's happening now with the Delta variant, with us masking, limited staff is very difficult now to get staff that want to come in in the afternoon. Our numbers have gone up drastically that last week as, you know, kids are getting ready to come back to school and parents are thinking, "I don't have anything." You know, due to them. Due to everything that's happening now with the Delta variant, with us masking, limited staff is very difficult now to get staff that want to come in in the afternoon for just two, two and a half hours at the end of the day with children in there. I am asking for the cap now. And currently, the mornings were fine, and then the mid-sixties to high-sixties. The problem is, or not the problem, the issue, afternoons now are up to eighty, eighty-two people. There was a cap. When Dr. Burnham came in, she capped it at one hundred and twenty-five, and that's pre-COVID. Those were the days we were able to get plenty of staff. We were able to meet all the needs of students and families. Last year during COVID, the numbers looked like they were in the thirties. And that was the year we had the high limit. So, I'm here tonight to ask that for the safety of the children, for the safety of my staff, that we are able to cap now or work out. I'm not accepting over registrations for the current time, not the entire year. And we'll get it again in a few months, depending on what the numbers are looking like. I have five rooms. I need to make sure that each cohort stays the same room each day, as well as the staff. We have access to outdoors, which we use all the time when we can, depending on the weather. We have access to the gymnasium one hour a day. However, we can't bring all the kids down at the same time. Once again, we have to take it for maybe twenty minutes each cohort. So, that would be my request, that we're able to cap it. That today would be the last day that we actively accept them, register them, and tomorrow, the people would go on the waitlist, depending on, you know, the chain accounts. And I'm hopeful that things will change.
Does anybody have any questions? Ms. Lightman?
Thank you. I did have a question. I want to thank you for the work that you've done on this. I did have a question of, was there a deadline given to parents to register?
So, the registrations were not out yet, but that's when it opened up. I was saying, as it did for preschool, everything opened. When I took over, and when I came in June, and then took over officially July 1st, we had, you know, we had a low number. We probably had maybe forty at the time. So, in the last, really in the last few weeks, that's what the influx was. And it was based on, from what I understand, the history is it was based on, it was capped at one twenty-five. That was the original cap. But as things changed, let's turn this into COVID, the number went down. And I'm again coming here to ask that we at least have a number for now till we get school started, till I get the number of staff that we need so that we provide a quality and safety environment for every family and for the staff.
And this is my only concern is that parents may procrastinate and they want to still register their child. I didn't know if it was a possibility to cap a certain amount that's higher than, say, the eighty-two, let people know about the final deadline, either the time or the number, where they can still register. I just have a concern for people that still believe that I care.
My concern would be, I understand completely. My concern would be if you say we give you one a week, we will literally get forty people in the next week. So, if we still not cap, you know, the number, we'd be back up to one twenty-five.
And again, you're pointing that we're struggling to time staff at the moment as well.
It's very, you know, as I said, it's a two and a half hour afternoon timeframe. So, we typically, you know, rely on students from the high school. Look, it's a request of, Mr. Cassidy's put it on school spring. We haven't, we haven't had, we haven't one person apply. We have We have a staff coming back from previous years. Most of them are, um, women that just wanted to come morning session, they don't want to come back in the afternoon. It's, it's very chaotic in the afternoon with all those children, especially now that they have to stay in the same room, you know, they wear their masks. It, it is very chaotic, so it's, it's difficult. And it's not only the staff, it's the safety of every
Any other questions? My, my concerns were, so it was, it was an amended registration cycle?
It's, I had nothing to do with I'm not taking blame on myself, I'm saying that, um, you know, what was provided on the website was similar to the previous year, that, you know, I don't, to be honest, right now, I couldn't even tell you if it's in our handbook, if it's one twenty-five, to be completely honest.
I do believe that is
So Dr. Burner, so we just confirm that that it is.
When we put the registrations on, we do encourage that the deadline is the last probably in the month of February. We do try to encourage folks to get their registrations in so that we can plan accordingly. But inevitably, there's always some sort of rolling in registration and until we reach the cap, typically we would continue to accept registrations that come in after the end of February. But, you know, we, we didn't foresee this coming in June. It, it's been the last handful of weeks that we've seen the numbers really trending in the wrong direction. So they have been some adjusted decisions in, in the last week or so around what should be the right course of action for the time being.
And I can appreciate every parent who don't know in February, as for children in the system, we don't know in February what we're doing in September. Some of these didn't have to go back to, or, you know, there are a lot of different things that parents are trying to figure out. I appreciate that, we've been talking many times over the last three days, many, and we're getting as many, you know, we took everyone that was coming in. I just feel now that we are going to appoint that may be really difficult for us to manage these children, keep them safe, keep them healthy, have the appropriate number of staff. And as I said, I'm not asking for, you know, infinite amount of time, just we can revisit it maybe once we see what helps when it takes off.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Uh, this is the thing, but it does say established cap for the, the sessions will be determined under your other bases. So this year is obviously not like most others, so I don't think it's unreasonable to cap for the children's safety at this point.
Okay, do you want to add a motion?
I'll make a motion to cap the extended day enrollment as of today, August 18th, uh, with the possibility of further review to reopen on that day. I'll second that motion.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. And permission to post, Mr. Cassidy, you want?
Yes.
Thank you for the opportunity to present these six positions to the school community this evening. Let me be sure that they're not oppositions, some of the standings, but, uh, this, the way of looking at some of these positions as we go forward into the school year, it's sort of a similar approach that we took last year. We came to the school community in August to kind of reshape, uh, our approach to students or assistance in systems with those students. So I'd like to take these in, I guess, in lectures because some of them are connected. So, uh, the first two postings we were requesting to post is a, is a behavioral coordinator and a behavioral committee coordinator. Now, um, we've already posted a, a behavioral coordinator and we want to, um, re-shape that position, or that standing position to strictly, um, maintain, um, uh, the committee. So that would be creating agendas, taking minutes and oversee, it says overseeing the district's social strategy, entry with data, uh, presenting updated to the school committee and to the committee. So that's the data process. Uh, we're, we're recommending, we posted that and I think that alone is going to go down because it's a de-emphasized role in the district. An emphasis position in the district will be our behavioral coordinator, which is we're looking at current staff members taking on, uh, the district's strategy for social health for the students. So they'd be part of the committee. They would likely report out, uh, to the school committee as well, uh, but they'll be getting into the weeds of what programs are being implemented at every school level and really targeting, uh, those strategies for those, uh, those types of students. And another trust to this position is that there'll be a coevaluator on our own new positions, student service positions that are higher for our social workers, uh, that may be a coevaluator for Dallas County if, if they're giving students a pension. So those are, uh, those are two of the six. The next one, um, the end image is that probably those are, uh, those are being funded by higher, so they would require a man in from administration. The next one is, uh, a new special education teacher at Lumberburg High School. And this is being funded by some new grants that we've received from DESI, uh, grant two fifty-two, these are just funded goes, I don't have any of them yet, but we're, we're trying to come up with a strategy, um, uh, for some of our students in our social program or the high school. And it's basically going to be pulling out, um, some of our diploma track students into separate classrooms and really, uh, lower class sizes so we can recruit those students. It's really a targeted group that we've been looking at for a while. The next two positions, uh, jumping up as we were talking about the Tessen State Program, just to give you a little bit more information, but, uh, with the approval of the Tessen State or the, the reopening plan, we're going to implement the Tessen State Program. And the way that we're looking at it now, uh, as Dr. Burner said, is that we've got identified classroom, I think it's room twenty-one in TCP, right outside the gravel lot, the students, we brought in, uh, a nurse, which is what we're recommending hiring here, uh, will go out as well as students. So this is, this is the permission to post this position. We anticipate that our tent guard will be needed as well. And, uh, it's, it's a position that will likely schedule those appointments for, for students the next day. And we're looking at, or probably marking on defense to spot one, spot two, but really identify, getting parents to go into specific spots into that parking lot the next day. That's just a task and we anticipate that that, that person will be providing data to the state as well as students coming in. So we would like permission to post those positions. And I do, I, I want to post them, but I want to make a committee order that we have not applied for the Tessen State Program yet because we have, we have not approved it yet. We are ready to apply for that program and that'll initiate the state contractor, it's the CIC health, health program has the contract. They will be providing a program coordinator to help Lumberburg implement the Tessen State Program. And I don't, we don't know what that is. I've been sent to somewhere, but I was just consulting with Katie and Laura, like, what does that, what does, what does that mean? And we're, uh, and certainly have submit that and, and build that engagement, we're not really sure what that will let us. And it, I'm just saying that it may not involve hiring a clerk, it may not involve hiring a full-time nurse. So I, I want to post these, uh, with programmatic approval or some praise in there, but, but it's, if we do need the position, uh, you know, our next meeting is in two weeks, we've lost two weeks of trying to get somebody into that position and, and Ms. McGlynn will probably have to do that. So we're just trying to get ahead of the storm of that, kind of what we gave to the social workers earlier this weekend. So that's a little side story, I'm moving forward that as we move forward. I think the final position is a, is a standard position, this was a field, a working manager for our athletic program, we had this last year. We would imagine, uh, at least I haven't seen any safety, uh, athletic safety protocols yet, but I would imagine there'll be some. This will, uh, this standard position will assist the assistant, uh, the athletic director keep our athletic, uh, program safe, our field safe, our corporate safe, so that, that would be my suggestion. I'll turn it back to the committee if, if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Does anyone have any questions, Mr. Cassidy? I guess not. Then I would motion to accept these positions.
I'll make a motion to accept the positions brought to board by Mr. Cassidy tonight.
And seven?
Seven.
All right, then all in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right, thank you very much.
Could I just mention one thing? I think it's important, um, as far as the nurse and the clerical position, uh, we're looking at potentially cheap funding for, so essentially local funds and extra funds, so that the public can stay there. And then the, uh, the working manager, it is the preference in the beginning, it's going to be funded out of the athletic of all accounts, so not over this.
Thank you. Uh, next we have an unaffiliated contract addition. I'm guessing that's you as well.
Yeah, so earlier, uh, June 16th, the, the school committee approved, uh, pay increases for our unaffiliated staff. There was a, uh, a salary schedule moving forward with a group of employees. But, uh, earlier the, the school committee approved the director of community schools. And as we, uh, as we, as we got closer to the, the beginning of the school year, we realized that that position didn't warrant a, uh, a contract because it's multiple funding sources and there is some unpredictability, especially with grants. Yeah, we felt that the position should go on the unaffiliated contract at the full-time, full-time position and we want to provide the employee, uh, benefited time, which is vacation, set and personal time, uh, similar to every other full-time employee in the district. Just kind of fell out of the, uh, our, our view at the end of the year. But we want, once again, we want to give this employee benefits. So the only way, uh, to do that, uh, after consulting with town hall, basically is step back the employee to the unaffiliated contract and adding it to the schedule. The second, uh, adjustment we would like to make onto the salary schedule is the creation of an associate director of the extended day in the early development center. So we did have a director of community schools at the beginning of the year. One of her first tasks was auditing, uh, the positions that are running the program. That revealed that the coordinator, through the years, which is a long-term, long-time employee, uh, has taken on a heavy load of administration tasks, probably going on development like the coordinators of the Uh, after discussing with, uh, the director of community schools and the superintendent, we do want to promote to the extended day director. So we're looking for a little bump above the coordinator, uh, which is a, a, with starting at a dollar five, uh, now an increase this year. So, uh, we will be rewriting, uh, our journals, including all these duties, so that we can afford that, that, those tasks, that position, that exists for future, future postings. So that, uh, are the two recommendations that I have for our school committee tonight. You know, as far as the director of community schools of budget impact, that, that's being funded out of the recent accounts, there's no local impact, uh, local budget impact. The, the associate director is strictly being funded out of the extended day of all accounts. So through, uh, superintendent, I'm, we, uh, requested that the school committee amend the attached, uh, unaffiliated salary schedule that we have in place. I'll turn it over to the chairman again.
Okay, does anyone have any questions? Mr. Cassidy? Seeing no questions, then does anyone have a question? Now we have the first reading, policy thirty-two oh one, student active discounts, and policy thirty-two oh three point oh one, federal funds supplement, not subsequent.
I'll make a motion to waive the first reading on policy thirty-two oh one and policy thirty-two oh three dot oh one.
And is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Um, typically we waive the first and second readings, so that's why that's being waived, it is posted on the website and, uh, it will be read next entirely at the third reading. Okay, so all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right. So now we have policy one-two oh two, regulations governing use of school facilities. So this policy was actually brought up at the policy subcommittee meeting and the school committee members, uh, on that sub All right. So now we have policy one-two oh two, regulations governing use of school facilities. So this policy was actually brought up at the policy subcommittee meeting and the school committee members, uh, on that subcommittee thought that this would be, um, worthy of school committee discussion to provide some direction for the members as to what revisions, if any, uh, would be needed. I don't know if Mr. Kelly or Mrs. Kelly would like to comment?
Well, Dr. Burner, I'm sure you wouldn't because I know I requested this and I cannot for the life of me remember what was my exact reasoning. I know I went to a, I said, this is a great idea to print to the committee and so sorry, I cannot remember what was that crazy one.
So we brought this policy up for discussion at the policy subcommittee meeting for, actually for two purposes for review. One being facility used by the recreation department here in town and looking to potentially make some amendment around that specific use. The other, um, was an issue around, um, the facility being rented for activities that we have deemed not allowable activities as recreational use unsupervised and scheduled
as recreational use, unsupervised and scheduled use of the facility. There had been some concern prior to my attention. We are having that conflict that was problematic, indicating that this activity is not allowable and we rent the facility for a similar activity. Correct, so you have one.
That was, that's what we were talking about. Activities that we can't do on school property in school's pools or outside. But then we have organized events and they bring us in, but they have insurance to back it up. That was our, that was our discussion. Okay.
Mr. Brenner?
Just to add into that discussion, I think one of the more controversial activities that recently has come up is skateboard. I know the skateboard group that's looking to build a skateboard park. They've done learn to skate, learn to skateboard at the school. Full disclosure, my, my two boy, two of my boys, one's five and one's seven, did the learn to skateboard activity. It was just on the side of the parking lot near the basketball and tennis courts. And it wasn't, you know, the seventeen-year-old kids jumping off stairs and railings. It was a very small area where they were doing really basic learn to skateboard activities. They had insurance. I know that we don't allow skateboarding on school property, but I saw that as more unsupervised. We don't have unsupervised skateboarding across our campus. But rented out to, rented out to a group that has insurance that's not going to be damaging the property that's doing it in the area. I have no problems with that. I think that makes sense. We're supporting the community. We're supporting this skateboard group to raise funds. So they can actually escape our, in the community, location to be, to be announced. So I think, I'm hesitant to add to the policy restrictedness. I think that we want to encourage groups to have activities. I can see the connection that if, we're not going to have unsupervised use of it, but if people plan and ensure their, their group, I don't know. There are exactly these concerns.
I think we're coming back to it now. The original problem was the signage specifically said on our properties, no skateboarding, no archery. It was a whole different, where do we draw the line and go over as we are going to support? And I think we have the issue of the signage stating we cannot do this and then we're being viewed as hypocritical, allowing starved events. So where do we draw the line and where, what do we allow and what do we not allow to not, you know, we're, we're going basically against the signage we just put up. Do we change the signage? Do we amend the policy? How do we effectively do this?
That much, that's not the rule. That's organized.
Do we, do we put that on? Like that's, so that's, how do we go about effectively communicating to the members of the community what we're going to allow? Does that need to just be reflected in the policy? That we will consider each and every event that's brought to us as long as we have proper insurance?
I think so.
I don't know if we can amend. I don't have a problem with the example that Brian cited. Truth be told, even though he's thirty-two, when he was that size, he'd skateboard no twice my size. So I'm trying to find a place to do it. He would have been involved in that kind of program. I don't think he would have enjoyed that. And then he would have wanted to take his skateboard and go back to school and do all those things where nobody was around. So I think, I think the difference is in the supervised versus unsupervised. I, I, I don't like the rub in the signage saying you don't allow skateboarding, but if you're with those guys over there, it's okay. So I think we either have to amend the signage or, I think we have to amend the signage. This is what I'm saying. And something like unsupervised. But then somebody could say their parent is supervising, so that doesn't work. I don't want to do that. But I don't have a problem with the program. I do understand the problem with the signage.
And then what if an archery program comes to us and say, well, we want to set up lessons for archery in the parking lot? So how do, how do we go about that? What if we have a dog trainer who wants to come to us and want to train their dogs in the parking lot? So we kind of have all these stipulations that you cannot do this. But if groups approach us, how do we?
Well, I think to Mr. Kelly's opinion, it really kind of all revolves around the insurance piece of it. So we could potentially change the signage to reflect that, like no uninsured skateboard programs or something like that. I agree that the signage does need to be amended, but I think Mr. Kelly's right. It really revolves around the insurance less than the supervision. Because you're right, any parent could technically be supervising.
So does that provide the policy committee with some guidance?
I think we need to just look at it again.
Okay.
I think it's also about educating the public because I feel like the signage needs to be there because we don't want students to be unsupervised and skateboarding. But we also want them all to be clear that you can rent these facilities if you have the proper insurance. That we're going to be renting these facilities to the community because we want to encourage our youth to have these events and we want them to be events that are at our business.
So then maybe what we need is a secondary marketing thing. You know, they're just getting the information out. Once this policy is set and done and developed, then we need to make sure that people are aware of the change in this particular part of that policy. Okay, and then there was the other part of the policy. Having to do with rental fees. Here we go. Rental fees, what's printed in red is a possible one. Rental fees for the Bloomberg Government Department executing government functions will be waived, but custodial and other related event costs will be charged as we have exact town meeting. Facility rental fees for town recreation programs, which is such an esports seasonal programs, will be waived, custodial or other related costs will be charged. Dr. Brenner and I attended a meeting in the Parks Department where we talked about the situation with the misunderstanding and the fees. And it resulted unfortunately in a soccer tournament canceled over the summer, which was unfortunate. The timing is to our losing Marshall Park for our softball baseball seasons. So we need some kind of decision through policy about how the recreation department can access our facilities without being charged a normal rental fee, but responsible for the custodial or other related costs. This was one part of this discussion that Dr. Brenner and I had at the Parks Department, was that we wanted to amend the policy somehow. The other part would be following the amendment of the policy. We would sit with the Parks Department and develop a protocol so that everybody knows who has the call, who, who applies to who about which field and how all of it works. Because it's all very murky. Nobody wants to see the recreation programs have difficulty because of facilities. We want to find a way for this to work. So this change in the policy, the policy committee was looking at involves that. Is there any other discussion on there, Mr. Lightman?
Thank you. I would say I appreciate what the Parks Department has been doing. They've really increased their program options. Maybe it could be great that other schools working together with the Parks Department. To just try to increase enrollment, try to give more opportunities for students. I do love the idea of collaborating fields and trying to reduce costs for the parks and schools. And I agree, I think it's great to get supplemented about the protocol for this too. And also to make sure that they see this and you can send this policy draft to the Parks Department director from the feedback as well. I did have a question, not on that language, but on number two, which is the rewording of the Bloomberg Community Schools programming activities. I just want clarification on what that would be and why that changes maybe.
I think that that was just, you know, in terms of priorities. That if any are extended day or early development center or community school, we need to go around.
But that wasn't right at the time associated.
No.
Okay, thank you.
So aren't the priorities that where this recreation department programs fall? Is it under the Bloomberg Town Meeting? Maybe it's on the same one with another, is it the Bloomberg Youth is on the same one? Yes. Okay, so that's where they are. All right. So then we will send this policy back for reworking?
Sounds good.
All right. Okay, thank you all. Thank you. All right, so under old business, the 2021, 2022 school calendar update. So since the last time we counted our employees, June 15th has been made into our holiday. I know that the town manager had been working on town side. We have a contact that's relative to that holiday. And now we have an opportunity to have a session for. Clearly, town departments will be closed on holiday. This year, the holiday, I believe, falls on Sunday. And so the holiday can be observed on Monday. That Monday, the twentieth, falls within our five-day added snow days on our calendar. So essentially our five added days, we could bump down one more day because the June 20th would be that, that holiday. So if we were still in session due to snow days being, there would be no school on that holiday. So they'll have to bump out one more, one more day because we're obligated to have 185 days on the calendar. So do I have a motion regarding the school calendar?
I'll make a motion to accept the school calendar as presented.
I'll accept the revisions, sorry.
I, I wasn't there. Aye. opposed? Okay. So now we are on public comments. If anyone would like to make a public comment, it just needs to be something that is in the purvey of the school committee. Seeing, oh, you're right. Absolutely. I need to say one thing.
My name is Erica Turello. I live in the Bloomberg Seventy-Three Room. And when I heard about the extended day issue, the possible, I just find it hard that we can't find another two high schoolers or someone in the community that has to work two and a half hours on the weekends for the purposes of providing care for students. I don't know if you can increase their pay for the high schoolers or anything incentive, but I think families would appreciate that.
Thank you. If you might. As you know, students aren't allowed to school yet, which is why this is going to be an asset temporary situation. Hopefully, lots of students return to school, be able to recruit a few to some of these positions. Okay, thank you. Now on to committee proposals. The first one is the finance committee. The finance committee met on the 12th of August. The town manager reported that the Long Club Food Pantry is moving to the TC Casillas Center. She also reported, and I think I've got this story really, that the town would be receiving, a little more than $2 million in opa funds, you know, much more dollars of funds, that the town receiving American Rescue. Sorry, I don't know the rest of those initials, but the American Rescue Funds. And those funds, once again, like our exit funds, they have to be spent in certain ways and certain manners and they have to be completely spent by the end of 2024. The special town meeting is the 16th of November. The DPW director indicated that he was working with the school department during the facility visit. Of course, the DPW is in charge of the Parks Department in Bloomberg, so people may not know that. The police chief reported that they are continuing with their tenement personnel plan at an officer each year. He also spoke about the increased mental health needs and he was looking at developing crisis teams that would include social workers. So I spoke earlier about getting someone from MASC to present to the finance committee and the school committee about Chapter Seven and all of that. So the date that we're looking at now is October 28th, which is a Thursday, which is a regular finance committee date. However, the consultant has not yet reacted to me, but she is available that way. As soon as I know her availability, I will check with you for yours. Okay? So that's the finance committee. Next, the other committee.
The advisory that met back in June to approve a field on account fundraiser as well as football gold products fundraiser. We are going to meet on August 30th for any other fall sport fundraiser requests.
And then the TC Casillas Building Design Committee.
So the TC Casillas meeting was canceled last week. We're still waiting for the, the contract to get started with the architect for this basically additional work. So the, the work has been completed for the renovation price. And now we are looking to get, because the price was so high, we're looking to get a price on what a comparable new build, tear-down new build could be. That way the citizens have the appropriate information to make that decision whether they want to renovate. So the hope would be that we would be having an article at a town meeting in November. If not, it would have to be the spring. The, the new contract is smaller. It's a sixty-day window because it's a lot less work to just come up with a tear-down new build. But it's a comparable new build, so we're not adding all the extras. We're going to see what the comparable cost would be. That way the citizens could decide if they want to renovate. So the goal would be to have an article. There's definitely going to be an article to renovate, whether the town decides to do that or not based off of looking at what a new build could be. Then they can go from there. So if the town decides to renovate, they renovate. If not, then we have to decide, do we do a new build? Do we do a different new build and do a whole different design process? So it is only a sixty-day, sixty-day contract because it's a smaller comparable build not for an expanded build. And our next meeting is August 11th. So I'll have more updates after and we'll see if we can get to the fall town meeting, but we don't know yet.
Good luck.
We actually had the policy subcommittee meeting. I'll put this on the agenda, so we met on August 1st. And we looked over five different policies, two of which obviously were for first read. And we meet again August 26th.
Thank you. Were there any other committees who missed from the agenda? Okay, then topics for future discussion.
I was hoping that once bus forms are ready, we have reviewed who we are able to provide transportation to and who we are not. If we could review those numbers and then see if there's a possibility If we could review those numbers and then see if there's a possibility we may have to look at the policy regarding busing going forward. I know there's been some people that have liked the only busing within a mile and a half. And maybe it's just that, or we look at those numbers.
That's what we're, we're planning on. Any parents have reached out to me directly with the concern that they live within a mile and a half? I've indicated to them that I need to be sure that I can provide the transportation and get those, those kiddos that wear a policy busing. And then we'll see what the availability for, for seats on each of the routes looks like. If we can seat more children on the bus, then, then we will.
Thank you.
Okay, well, then I guess that's the end of the vote here. So then I don't have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn at seven fifty-one PM.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you to the administrators that came this evening. We appreciate it.